Patrol officers should be trained on how to extricate an individual from a vehicle as safety considerations for both officers and the public may not allow enough time for SWAT response to be effective, as the current policy directs that the SWAT team will do the extrication. And so, training officers and patrol to do so will help increase the skills and resources The EPD, or the department's response to resistant policy, addresses the oversight and review of use of force, including annual reporting. In that, the policy is relatively new, enacted in 2018, May. Ensuring fidelity to the intent of the order, including for officer-involved shooting events, will help support the department's goal in meeting its service community goals, and so making sure that they follow the guidelines of that policy is important. We also note that local communities and municipalities are identifying that an officer-involved shooting affects the whole community, and transparency is a necessary component of maintaining trust. And so, providing for a holistic review of the actions and what those policies are relevant to those events through an organizational approach is important and should be shared with the community and not just internally with the organization. And then, the department has, and the city, has demonstrated a commitment to continuous improvement. The update of these policies, the review of the incident, and engaging in external review identifies that there is truly a goal to maintain transparency and service to the community. And ideally, a review of policies related to force, vehicle operations, and individuals in mental health distress should be set for review at least every two years, and more frequently as changes in law or established practices occur. As we noted earlier when we went through the overall list of policies that we reviewed, some of these have some age on them, and so ensuring that the department will do, you know, more frequent and timed review of each policy, particularly those that are deemed risk, will be helpful to the overall goal and organization of the department. So, in terms of what we did, we looked at both the incident occurring as a result of the shooting on March 12th of Ms. Clemens, and then we also conducted an overall policy review to assure both the city and the department where their policies stood relative to national standards and engagement. At this point, based on the mayor's direction, I believe that we will take questions from the council, and then we'll pause to review what will be the public questions.
Correct. This time, any questions from the council? Mr. Stephan?
I'll jump in. First of all, let me start off by saying this is a tough situation, and try to kind of lay the groundwork that way. I see that, what I understand to be members of the Clemens family here, and extended family, and I just want to start by saying this is tough, and kind of explain that we're going to be asking questions and maybe using language that may sound uncaring, or crass, or possibly, maybe myself even, but just want to let them know, and let Lieutenant Jensen and all the officers know that, you know, as we ask these questions and go through this process, you know, we're, at least I should talk for myself only, are thinking this is tough, and it's not an easy situation, so I just want you to know that. You know, in trying to take the week or so, we had to dive through all this material, which was really overwhelming, even for somebody who, in my profession, does this kind of large information overload and review. What I want to start off with is to say that we can do better. I think that's the phrase that I want to use, and I want to kind of emphasize as we go through this. And I actually wanted to start it with what you finished with, which was the critical incident policy review. And, you know, that's kind of where I started with, with my review of all the materials, and I appreciate the work that was done with that, and, you know, I have some questions that maybe you can answer, or maybe Chief Lally, or somebody from the police department. First and foremost, the draft body-worn camera policy has become an official policy, correct? That's, I think somebody said that, but would any of the, or all of the incidents where the cameras were turned off, would those have violated the current policy?
Yes, and that's why we made the policy findings that we did, was that pursuant to the existing policy, which was draft at the time and now official, those were violations.
I appreciate the finding in the policy review about needing to define de-escalation, because in reading all the reports, and statements, and kind of summaries, and the main thing that I come away with is it, I see the effort by the officers to de-escalate, to slow-roll this, you see it termed in different ways, but at the same time, I'm seeing these officers not really with the skill set needed for this type of a crisis. This person, Cynthia, and what she was, the behavior she was demonstrating, the, you know, statements she was making or not making, and so I just see a, I see a mismatch, so I appreciate that, that finding. The 42.5 policy review and request for CIT, and I think, I think you looked over at Anna, and I did too, the CIT officer, and the, and further on, the tactical negotiations, are those areas being addressed by the CCSU? Is that, is that, can you kind of come up and speak to that, and tell us?
Good morning. Yes, specific to crisis intervention officers and CIT training. So, at the time of the incident, there were approximately over 100 officers who were trained in crisis intervention. At this point, today, over the past year, there are approximately over 170 officers. That's also including our non-sworn officers, or our community service officers, who are trained in CIT. It's a 40-hour class that everyone goes to. We have about 20 more members of the department to go, to go through that training, and so our goal is by the end of the year, that all officers are trained in CIT. CIT officers, in essence, are the immediate interruption for a call. CCSU, which is our collaborative crisis services unit, that's the unit where we have currently two full-time officers, and we're in the process of hiring our three part-time mental health workers. That unit will focus on pre-intervention techniques, and also, if needed, if there's an immediate response where we need to have someone from a mental health profession be on scene. So, it's twofold. It's prevention, which is the goal, which is to intervene with people prior to an incident occurring, and also, if needed, on scene for mental health professionals to provide further assistance that a CIT officer could not do. CIT officers are meant for that kind of immediate response. We also have negotiators, so at the time Sergeant Hartman was a negotiator, that's an additional level beyond CIT training, there's more advanced training involved with that. So, we do have approximately seven to eight negotiators in the department as well, and those are meant for long-term incidents where it's going to be a lengthy process.
So, kind of trying to draw out some specifics with what we've done since this incident, and what could have happened at this incident. Could the mental health, social workers, I'm not sure what the phrase is for the CCSU, could they have been called to the, to the scene and tried to approach the vehicle and talked to Cynthia?
Yes, since the, well, there's, there's a few things that have happened since the incident. So, over the past year, implementing the crisis service unit, the collaborative crisis service unit, yes, that could be a resource. That can help with some diffusion of incidents, getting information from family members, and also professionals who may be more advanced in their communication skills than an officer who received 40 hours of training. So, yes. Also, we've implemented an emergency services detail, which I had mentioned earlier when I spoke about our trips to New York, and London, and Scotland, and implementing some of the skills and techniques and processes that they use, that has currently been in place over the past four to five months. So, we would have approached this situation if this were to happen today, some things would be the same, and some things would be different.
Okay. I mean, could you point out, I, I really didn't see any tactical negotiations going on with Cynthia. Did I miss something? Did I, I mean, what I saw was a lot of speaking over a PA or a bullhorn, you know, kind of the standard, "You're under arrest, please get out of the car," kind of the legal words that you have to use to, you know, establish certain rights, responsibilities, all that stuff, but I didn't really hear any negotiations. Did I, did I miss something?
So, negotiations encompasses a variety of different things. First, to establish a negotiation progress or a communication progress, process, you have to have contact with the person. And so, in this, in this incident, a few things. So, yes, you do see Sergeant Hartman communicating over the announced, the PA system, attempting to have Ms. Clemens exit the vehicle. Simultaneously, at some point, too, they were trying to contact and find a phone number to call her, so that they can speak to her. Again, the distance, the ability to communicate with her was difficult in this instance as well. She moved her vehicle, I believe, 11 times during the incident, so as they're trying to establish communications, a lot of times, it takes, it does take some time, and once you do, that's where the negotiations usually then occur. So, what they were doing is trying to attempt to establish that, that communication through a phone, through some type of contact, and then that's when you can start having a conversation about what it is that you need to do.
Well, let me, let me do one more thing, and then I'll kind of let others ask some questions, and kind of regroup, but switch to a different area. The report, as we just heard, found several policy violations. What, without getting into specifics, what are the typical consequences for some of those violations? And I guess a core area is, I guess, because it's going to get asked, so I'll ask it first, can Jensen be fired for cause for the violations that occurred, that he was a part of? The failure to call an ambulance or to render aid after? So, I guess those are two questions, so.
So, Officer Jensen, as Hillary Hines just reviewed, obviously Lieutenant Jensen violated certain policies. Whether or not those policies would violate, or would cause a termination process to occur, that I will not answer now. There's additional information that I will be receiving, however, to, then there's a process, too, that has to take place in any type of disciplinary process, and so that needs to take place first, before I answer that question.
Okay, fair enough. But how about, how about typical consequences for those, for those violations that were found? I mean-
So, so, when you talk about discipline for an officer, every situation is different, and it depends on the magnitude of what's going on, it depends on the actions that are taken throughout the course of the incident, it also depends on the explanation as to why certain things are done. So, to just have a blanket, if officer does this, or this, then this occurs, that's not how discipline is handled. It's, it's, you know, through the legal department, there's conversations about case law, there's conversations about what, what has been past practice, so it's not easy to just say, "This person violated this policy, and therefore, this happens." So, it's a totality of circumstances, it's dependent upon a lot of different factors, and so, once those factors are taken into consideration, then a determination is made.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lay down on the side. Mr. Dixon, start on the end.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just first say that, you know, to describe this, words really can't describe how tragic the situation is. You hear about these police-involved shootings all over the country, what seems like every other day, and every time I personally see one of these situations, my heart breaks. And never do you think, or want to believe, that it can happen in your own community, and lo and behold, it does. And now that we're here, we have some decisions to make. And the decisions that we have to make, I believe it's going to determine ultimately what kind of future this community has in store. So, this is a very pivotal decision, and I, for one, am very thankful that I have a seat at the table to help that decision-making process, as many of my colleagues, I'm sure, are very happy to have a part in as well. So, first, let me do a little bit of follow-up to some of the comments and questions of Councilman Stephan. Going back to the policy concerning body cameras, it's well-known, as you stated, that at the time of the incident, the body camera was, act was in draft form, right? But the state of Illinois has a law that all police departments have to follow if you deploy any body cameras. So, my question is, why is there so much reference to the draft ordinance when the parent law is already on the books?
So, our policy, or our administrative review was based on policy. The state's attorney had already done its legal review, and our determination, the policy was guiding, even though it was draft. What it means in terms of collective bargaining and subsequent decision at that point is not for us to decide, but the draft policy was more prescriptive, and so we were following the draft policy as the guidance for the officers in the field.
Hartman failed to activate his camera properly, right? Same thing for Jensen. So, the, the criticalness of having the cameras on during certain times varies depending on the situation, according to the law, right? Do you want to speak to that a little bit?
If you want to finish your question, then I can.
Okay, okay, sure. So, according to the law, it has to be on at all times, so there, it doesn't give you much leeway unless, you know, someone requests to turn it off, you know, whoever you're dealing with. You know, if you go back into the squad car, and there's an active camera, already, you know, you can turn it off then, too, at that point, but other than that, those small, those couple of instances, it should be on and deployed at all times. So, I, so I guess my question is more for, for you, Chief. What materials do you need to receive, additional materials do you need to receive in order to make the determination as concerns to the violations? And we didn't mention body cameras when that question was asked before, but specifically, when it comes to the body cameras, what additional information do you need in order to make that decision? And then also, can you explain to the public and myself, can you clarify the authority that you have in making the determination of firing or returning to active duty?
Okay. So, I want to talk about the body camera policy, too, because I think there needs to be some clarification about a few things. So, first and foremost, at the time, our body camera program, we were in an implementation phase. So, the Police and Community Relations Improvement Act, which guides the Law Enforcement Officer-Warned Body Camera Act, there were a lot of things in the act, statements and guidance that we implemented, and most everything is in our policy, even in the draft policy. That draft policy, I worked with the legal department, worked with the King County State's Attorney's Office to implement a draft policy. That draft policy was in draft form, not because it excluded certain things that were in the Law Enforcement Body Camera Act, but because for the practical purposes of some things that the law was not clear on. So, we were in a, in a draft phase, we were in implementation phase, to work through some of those minor, minor issues. In the Law Enforcement Officer-Body-Worn Camera Act, the law specifically states, and you are correct, in when an officer cannot turn their, does not need to have their camera on. So, there are certain things, such as, as you mentioned, if they're in a squad with an active camera, if they're engaged in a community caretaking function, if also, if the victim or witness to a crime wishes that the camera is turned off, they can turn the camera off. But when an officer is engaged in law enforcement-related encounters or activities, which is in the law, and which is also in our policy, the definition, and this is from the Law Enforcement Officer-Warned Body Camera Act, and it's also in our policy, "Law enforcement-related encounters or activities include, but are not limited to, traffic stops, pedestrian stops, arrests, search, searches, interrogations, investigations, pursuits, crowd control, traffic control, non-community caretaking interactions with an individual while on patrol, or any other instance in which the officer is enforcing the laws of the municipality, county, or state. Law enforcement-related encounter activities does not include when the officer is completing paperwork alone, or only in the presence of another law enforcement officer." So, to your question, what additional information that I'm waiting for, specific to the body camera, so during the, the two instances in which Lieutenant Jensen turned his body camera off, so the first time was approximately for 30 seconds where he made a phone call, and those are, that information is collaborated by phone records. And the second time, he turns his body camera off, it's for a period, I believe, for about 31 minutes, and during that time, there are phone records that corroborate his, what he's doing, which is making phone calls, but there's also instances in when he's in his police squad, and that he is, his squad camera may be recording. So, sir, there is some additional information that I am going to need to first determine that that was happening, to break down what he was doing during that time. Secondly, when you think about that definition of what, when an officer needs to have the camera on, the interpretation of when an officer is in completing paperwork alone, or only in the presence of another law enforcement officer, there were times when Lieutenant Jensen was just speaking to officers during that, that time when he had his camera off the second time. So, what I would like is to, and we're currently working on this, is to break down that, that timeframe, and to say specifically what he was doing, doing, doing during that time. And so, if he's in his squad, as you had mentioned earlier, there's an exception there, if he's in a squad with his camera recording, if he's in the presence of just Sergeant Hartman, because there is a point where he does speak to Sergeant Hartman, there's also another point where I think he believes, he speaks with the Illinois State Police, the sergeant who was on scene, too. So, that is the additional information that I would like to have, before any determination is made regarding that policy. And I think that's your first question, and your second question was?
About your, explaining your authority in making decision in this process when it comes to either firing, or bringing Jensen back to active duty, how, what's your part in, in that, in explaining, you know, what happened before you, and what happens after you, what do you do with your decision?
So, based upon all the information, I will make a recommendation, and that recommendation is made to the city manager, on what I believe should occur.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I'll, I know that some of my colleagues have some other questions concerning body cameras, so I'll, I'll come back to that. Next, what I would like to speak about is the timeframe of the research that went into the phone records. So, according to the report, it was a really quick timeframe, maybe a couple of hours after the incident. So, my question to, to Hillary and Hines is, is why such a short period of time are you looking at phone records? I would think that it would be a little bit more extended, but I want to ask you all Please, if you can go to the microphone, so we can hear you properly, sir?
Phone records, the phone records that we looked at were primarily Lieutenant Jensen during the time that he was, prior to arrival, and a few hours after the incident. There were no other records that were relevant to the entire incident, other than Sergeant Hartman's. What we did learn, though, through Lieutenant Jensen's records, was that he made phone calls during specific times that he, the body-worn camera was turned off, and those, those phone calls were to supervisory, eligible police department officers, in theory, to talk about the situation at hand.
Okay, and for clarification, that was a city phone and not personal phone?
That's correct.
Correct.
He only, he only carried his city phone that evening.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that, for that answer. Another question I have is in relation to the description of what, of how it was described, how Ms. Cynthia Clemens was described, right before the incident occurred. In the report, and, and here this morning, you described her act as a charge, her charging the officer?
Yes.
So, I wonder where you received the definition of charge, and how that could apply to what is on video?
We reviewed the video from all angles, and from all the cameras of all the officers on scene. It was our determination that Ms. Clemens' actions were a charge towards the officers.
No, I, I-
I'm not here to define charge, I mean, we all, we can look it up in the dictionary. However, in our determination, we concluded that her actions were consistent with a charge, and in aggressive movement towards the officers.
Yeah, with all due respect, I'm not here to look up anything in the definition, in the dictionary of what the word "charge" means. I think we all know what the word "charge" means. I'm asking, how do you define "charge" in this situation, seeing that there was one foot on the ground before shots were fired? So, I'm asking you to, to explain that, because when you use a word such as "charged" in this situation, it raises the alertness and things to another level, so I just want to be clear on why you chose the word "charge" versus anything else?
Based on the video evidence that we reviewed, when Ms. Clemens exited her vehicle, she charged, quote, "charged at the officer in an aggressive manner."
Okay, and now, can you explain why the use of the word "aggressive"? I'm just, and listen, I'm, I'm asking these, these questions because I want to know, the public wants to know, so when you use these types, these type of descriptive words, you have to be able to explain and back up why you're using that type of language, and, and I'm sure that you have a, a good handle of the, of the, of the English diction, but I want to make sure that this thing, these things are being explained properly. So, please explain to me what act was aggressive?
My review of the body-worn camera footage, when Cynthia Clemens exited her vehicle and turned towards those officers, she moved towards those officers in a quick, aggressive manner. I can't describe it any other way, other than a quick and aggressive manner towards those officers.
Mr. Dixon, and Hillary Hines has the floor, please. Let's hold it down.
Thank you, Mayor.
We can all hear.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, I'm going to give the floor and pass it to my colleagues, and let them ask more questions, and I'll come back later.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. This incident has been a tragic incident for everybody, there's no doubt about it. It has changed many things that happened in our community. We could all say, "We should've, we could've," you know, but I think there has been some changes since then, but what I want to talk about is before- But what I want to talk about is before that, okay? First of all, I have a question for Chief Lally. When you started with these body cameras on March 12th, how long is it that we started with body cameras? Because what I understand is, we're like the trailblazers at the Elgin PD with body, body cameras. It's not like everybody in the state has them, or everybody in the state wants them. So can you answer that? And I know that you were in the process of training people with body cameras, so I don't know if everybody had them or not, so.
Was that your, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, for now.
So, the Elgin Police Department implemented a body cam program in, we started in around 2016 and 2017. And then in 2016, we were doing test phases, because we were awaiting the, the law passage, which was the Body-Warred Camera Act, which took effect in, I believe, January of 2017. During, prior to that, we were testing body cameras. We had received a grant from the Department of Justice to purchase body cameras. By the time we implemented, we were doing it in waves, because it's hard to give everyone a body camera and then get feedback. So we were very purposeful about how we implemented the cameras. At the time of the incident, so in about April, March, April of 2017, is when we started training, we started rolling out the body cameras. We weren't giving body cameras to certain officers at the time, because we needed clarification on, you know, certain things in the law. So yes, at the time of this incident, the body cameras were relatively new, 10, 11 months, which is why the policy at the time was in draft policy, because we knew that there would be some practical applications that were not covered in the law, that we would need to address. Everything in the law is in the policy. So, but our policy also can be more restrictive. And so, you know, we also were working towards what's the, the balance between, you know, the restrictiveness. Not, of course, everything in the law is in the, in the policy, but there's some practical applications of things that we needed to work out. So yes, at the time of the body cameras, you know, it was a new program, we were in implementation phase, you know, we've worked through some of those, I guess, questions now, because it's a couple of years later. And so, to your point, yes, we were a department that, there are a lot of police departments, just as recently as a few months ago, I was at a symposium where they were talking about the body cameras and the law, and there's a lot of questions that many departments still have. That's why they're hesitant to implement the body cameras. We chose not to take that route. We chose not because we were told to have body cameras. We chose to have body cameras because we understand, in our profession, this is what is expected. And so we were the leaders in that. And we have received many, even last week, I received a text from a, a police chief, a neighboring police chief, who said, "Who can I talk to about your body cameras?" And I think that that's something that we should be proud of, is that in this incident, we at least have the body camera, so that there is no question as to what actually happened, because a lot of times, there isn't video footage. And so, we were, we were proud to implement it. We knew that we had to work through some things, because we were one of the first departments. It was a brand-new law, and that's why we chose to implement, have a draft policy that incorporated everything that the law required, but work through the practical parts of the law that, that a lot of people didn't think about, I think, when they wrote the law, which is why there's some things that we had to work on.
Okay. So, what I see with, with body cameras, it's good for both sides, to protect us from both sides, but also, it doesn't always tell the whole story, you know? I think that what we all saw and keep seeing is roughly a small window of everything that has happened. Okay? I, I understand that. Now, going forward, is it possible to always keep the body cameras on, and then in those instances, that we're saying that they were turned off because of phone calls or whatever, can that be redacted now? Is that, is that what happens?
Yes. So currently in our policy, it states that if there is, the body cameras need to remain on at all times when officers are engaged in case strategy, or making phone calls, or discussing certain things, that would necessarily give information that we would not want the public to know, because it could be sensitive information, it could be something that deals with the, the parties that we're involved in, that we don't want to be out. So yes, we've implemented in our current policy that the camera remains on, and anything that we can, if requested, would be redacted out. And so, we have addressed that issue.
Okay. Let me see. I think this is for Hillard Hines. You mentioned that during this ordeal, the car moved 11 times, correct? And at the point, towards the end, probably the 11th time that it moved, it was considered disabled, but what I didn't see, or I wasn't sure, I didn't read anywhere, was the car still on or off? Does anybody know? Because to me, it seems like the department went ahead and pinned the vehicle, so it wouldn't move? You know, because if they wouldn't have done that, the car was still on, probably could have been a 12th time? You know? I don't know. Does anybody know that?
When the vehicle was pinned, the driver of the vehicle, Clemens, tried to remove the vehicle from the pin maneuver, and so both officers that were conducting that maneuver, Officer Jensen, Lieutenant Jensen and Sergeant Hartman, had to keep positive pressure on their police patrol vehicles to keep Ms. Clemens' vehicle from leaving the pin.
Okay. I know, I'm not a police officer, and I don't pretend to be one, but I know that when you go out on a call, there are certain procedures that you do and you take, but unfortunately, you can never, never tell what the outcome's going to be. In other words, like, you don't know how that person's going to react, or what's going to happen at that moment, and you have seconds to think about that. So, when, to me, it seemed like when they were going ahead and, and assessing this, it seems like there was always one surprise after another. And the biggest surprise is probably when the car caught on fire, when Ms. Clemens did that. Nobody expected that to happen, right? But you know, we know that she was under the influence, or she had issues, and maybe that's why it happened, I don't know, but that's not a regular thing that happens, or people do. Because obviously, that smoke is going to affect you, and you're going to want to come out. And in this case, when she came out, to me, it seemed like there's a difference about coming out, to try to save yourself, and there's a difference of having something in your hand to come out with, you know? Would there have been a difference if there wasn't any knives? I know people think knives aren't dangerous, but it doesn't take much to cut an artery. Was that the issue, that she was considered charging, or that she was armed, per se? You know, I don't know, I don't want to put-
The video evidence shows that Ms. Clemens exited her vehicle in an aggressive matter, manner, holding a knife in each hand, as she came towards the officers. That's what the evidence will show.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, if I could say, you're right. When we talk about the continuum of a use of force, a person exiting a vehicle without a weapon, or a person exiting a vehicle with a weapon in each hand, does make a distinction in terms of how the officers evaluate the overall circumstance. And so as my colleague is identifying, is that when she exited, she did have a knife in each hand, and so that creates a different standard, and that was the review standard that we followed here.
Okay. And, let me see. I think that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, ma'am. This is certainly a difficult time in our city. My heart goes out to the family, to members of the community who have been dealing with this issue. We're certainly in the crossroads in this city at this moment. I think that there were missed opportunities to maybe de-escalate the situation that happened with Cynthia. And maybe, and I'm just speculating, just conjecture on my part, that there might have been some acute, or there continue to be some acute issues in terms of our training to de-escalate these types of situations. So my heart goes out to the family, and goes out to the members of the community who have been dealing with this, because nobody deserved to be in this situation at this point in time. Nonetheless, my question goes to Officer Jensen, and his thought process specifically about her being under mental duress. I went over the depositions, or as you guys call them, the interview. Did he have a belief that there was mental duress at the moment, or during the situation?
Yes, to your, to your answer. In two situations, and I can answer it in two ways. The body-worn camera footage will show that at 1:06, that, that morning, Lieutenant Jensen made the statement to the officers on scene, that he believed Ms. Clemens was undergoing a mental episode. In his interview, Lieutenant Jensen also indicated that he believed Ms. Clemens was having a mental episode, mentally challenged, or under the influence of drugs.
Okay. So, the question is then, why, if we saw signs of mental illness, from what you gather, why did Officer Jensen take so long to call the ambulance? Do, do we have an idea?
We don't, we don't have that, we don't have an answer for that, why it took so long. We do know that once, when Ms. Clemens was shot, Officer Jensen requested an ambulance at that point in time. But he did not comply with the policy that states that when you're dealing with a mentally challenged individual, you must call an ambulance.
So the ambulance was called after the fact? After the incident?
After Ms. Clemens was shot.
Okay. So, let me, let me move on, because at this point, the point in time, it's almost futile to echo some of the questions that some of my colleagues have already asked, and Chief Lally has already answered one of my questions specifically about why the cameras were turned off, even though we need additional information as it relates to that matter. But my question goes to, in, in your professional opinion, and Chief Lally, you might be able to answer this as well, in what situations do officers use non-lethal force to take somebody down?
So, I mean, when we talk about the use of force, it really is, you know, the term that people are using now is response to resistance, and that's why that there's a lot of training, it's a high-risk area. And so, verbal control is the basic level of control engaged by an officer. So if I ask you to do something as an officer, I have the authority and the power to do so. And then, whatever actions an officer takes subsequently to that engagement, goes along what has traditionally been called a continuum of force, there's a bunch of different ways of training this now. But again, what is the level of force that I'm presented with as an officer, and then what is the appropriate response? And so as force escalates, and so from the simple, you know, "I'm going to place you under arrest," that's considered force, right? "I'm, I'm putting you in handcuffs, and I'm taking you away," to the extent where somebody starts to fight and, you know, resist the, the authority of the police officer present. So, those situations, every day, law enforcement officers engage in situations where they don't use lethal force, and frankly, in the city of Elgin, this is a very rare occurrence. And so, you know, the day-to-day interactions of law enforcement don't necessarily engage in force, and so that range of activities. But where it comes to lethal force, it's defined by law and by policy, and that's what is reviewed when an officer's actions result in lethal force.
Thank you. I'll gather some additional thoughts, and might have some additional questions. Thank you.
Ms. Powell?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you to everyone here. Thanks to the public that's here on a Saturday morning, giving up some of your time with your family. I want to echo some of the same comments that have been made by my colleagues about the difficulty that we find ourselves in as a community, as an organization, as a department. This has been an unprecedented, unprecedented tragedy for our community, and we can't overlook that. There has, and continues to be, in my opinion, so much that we have accomplished as a community here in Elgin, in terms of our relationships with the community and the police department over the past few decades, and that can't be overlooked. And I want to continue to move in a positive direction in that area. But we have to get past this, and we have to address it in a way that ensures transparency, accountability, and healing for everyone involved. That said, I do have a couple of questions. Some have already been answered and addressed by my colleagues. Going to the, the body camera infractions that were made by several members of the police department that were on the scene that night, this question is for Hillard and Hines. In your professional judgment, is, are those considered safety issues or neglect of duty issues? How, how do you interpret those violations?
Yeah. So, so what those violations would be varies based upon the organization, and part of the reason why we identified it as draft is because, as the chief has done a lot of discussion on the law, prior to the implementation of cameras, each organization was required to have a policy. And so, what is that role of the draft policy in terms of how it holds its officers to account, is really kind of the issue at hand. And depending upon the situation, they can be identified as either administrative, or frankly, more serious offenses, depending upon what are the consequences and the outcome of not implementing that camera. We've seen nationally where people have not turned on cameras during very high-level, profile-use-of-force events at all, and those have had challenges in terms of those outcomes as well. So again, as the chief has identified, she will be looking at the totality of the circumstances, and frankly, how the organization implements or interprets what the role of its draft policy was around the officer's conduct.
Because I think it's, it's safe to assume and, and to take from the lack of body camera footage from some of these times when it's turned off. We don't know what was happening, what was being said. That could very well have an impact on investigating this whole tragic situation. I know that when we implemented the body camera program, one of the things that Chief Lally specifically said is that these body cameras would be used by the police to review how they've handled situations, and what could have been done better, and what we're doing well. And so, I, I look at that, and I'm definitely concerned about that. A question, another follow-up question for Hillard Hines. In your policy review, and you noted several different standard operating procedures of the police department that you reviewed, during the course of your review, I did not see a review of the city of Elgin's employee handbook and policy. Did you not include that in your review as well? Because that would also pertain to these officers.
No, we did not use that within our scope. We really looked just at the department's policies and practices, specific to use of force. Generally, the employee handbooks don't necessarily address it, but I understand what you're saying in terms of administrative law, that the employee handbook would have an impact as well.
Okay. Because there is, in our own employee handbook for the city of Elgin, there is specific, I mean, obviously not specific to use of force, but in terms of, I think it's in section 15, conduct and work performance, and it talks about expectations for conduct and work performance. And examples of matters that give rise to disciplinary action include neglect of duty, acts of incompetence, negligence, conduct that would create an appearance of impropriety, or would undermine the credibility of the city or the employee, violation of a safety rule or safety practice. Those are just three of the things that are listed in the employee manual policy, that I think could have and should have been reviewed as well. Lieutenant Jensen in particular is not covered by the collective bargaining agreement, so these, these requirements and expectations would obviously apply to him, and I believe they would also apply to the bargaining unit employees as well, as long as it was not in direct conflict with their, their CBA. So that's just a statement I have. There's been a lot of- There's been a lot of talk about Ms. Clemens' behavior on the night in question in terms of, it was determined by Lieutenant Jensen in particular on the scene that she was having a mental breakdown, a mental episode. And so, that was established early and the failure to call an ambulance per procedure once she, once it was established that she was having a mental episode. So, looking at the totality of this situation, understanding someone who is having a mental episode, and then she set the car on fire with her in it, and how, you know, when she was exiting the vehicle, is it conceivable that she was stumbling forward versus lunging or charging getting out of the car? Because I know that this was, some of this was talked about earlier. But thinking about someone who is, A, having a mental episode, not able to think and act clearly, not able to necessarily respond to directions very well if you're having a mental episode, sitting in a burning car inhaling smoke for a number of minutes, probably not able to see or breathe. Can you give me an idea of how that would impact a person's ability to respond and exit a vehicle? I mean, their ability to act in a manner of someone who has not, does not have all of those externalities taking place is very different.
Right. And I think that's the tragedy of the circumstance, right? In terms of what is the belief and the interpretation of what was involved with the party at the hand? What we do know and what we identified was that Lieutenant Johnson felt that Ms. Clemens was in a mental distress situation. However, we don't have the facts proving to that one way or the other. What we know is that this was a duration period. We also know that the officers tried a variety of attempts to engage with Ms. Clemens. And what we also know is that at the point of the use of force, when she exited the vehicle, she had two knives in her hand. Her car was on fire. And what was her mental state and what were those circumstances, that frankly, is not known. What we do know and what the law requires and what the policy requires is that we look at it within the context of that situation. And then also, as the state's attorney did, look at it within the law and saying, what were the officer's interpretation of that event? So, I understand, and we truly do have empathy with the family and the community around this because it is a challenging event. But it does go down to policy and law and looking at the actions of those officers. And so, that's where we stood in terms of our investigation.
One of the things, you know, police officers have a great deal of discretion in how they do their job. There's a lot of judgment that is required. And I will have to commend the police department, the folks that were on the scene. Because early on in this process, I was impressed with the patience that was shown, the talk about use of non-lethal force. Our standard operating procedures from the police department talk about the sanctity of human life. And I saw that towards the beginning of this tragic incident, that the intention was not to hurt her. And somehow, things changed. And that is a matter of discretion and judgment. And again, going back to dealing with a person who is having a mental episode, is there something different? Should a different strategy have been used at the time that she exited the vehicle? Were there other options? Would it have been a violation of our policy and procedures for officers to use their discretion to employ a different option on how they dealt with that situation?
I think the real challenge for that is what could have happened as opposed to what did happen. And I think that when we made our policy review and recommendation here, there are several things that can improve these situations in the future, right? Allowing for remote set practices in terms of how we deploy resources, ensuring that CIT-trained officers are deployed to each of these situations, and making sure that removed-level supervision is present on the scene. All goes to allowing for a more holistic approach and review of that scene. But what we faced at that night is that you had two officers in very close proximity to Ms. Clemens when she exited the vehicle. And based upon their training, their understanding of the law, and their awareness of policy, they engaged in the actions that they did. The challenge with that, obviously, is that would another officer make another decision? Perhaps. But we're tasked with looking at the decisions and the actions of the officers in that place at that time.
Right. But I guess what I'm getting to are, there were other options that could have been employed. For example, they could have, when she exited the vehicle, they could have backed up further to give her more room. Again, keeping in mind that she was experiencing a mental episode. That would not have been a violation of policy, correct?
No, there's a variety of actions that they may have been able to engage that would not have violated policy. I mean, the policy didn't direct the actual shooting of Ms. Clemens, right? They were acting in response to what they perceived as the resistance. So, our options, right?
And using their discretion and judgment. So, using their discretion and judgment, they also could have chosen to be on the other side or move to the other side of the wall. Because those Jersey walls are, you could just kind of step over them, they're not that high. And looking at how the situation was described by various officers that were on the scene, some officers said, described it as, when she was exiting the vehicle, that she charged or lunged and made some type of war cry or grunting noise, while at least one officer described it as coughing, which I think would be reasonable if you're sitting in a car inhaling smoke. I guess my question is just around the whole discretion issue of, there are other options that were available to the officers. Taking the totality of the situation into consideration, if preserving the sanctity of human life is the driving, one of the driving factors of our standard operating procedures for the police department. And when I say that, the sanctity of not only the human life of the public, but obviously of our officers. Either one of those options would have preserved both lives, the lives of the officers as well as the life of potentially Cynthia Clemens. And again, I'm just asking that question, you know, in terms of judgment. A couple of other questions I had regarding, I'll leave it at that for now because I think some of them have already been answered. But I do potentially want to come back to a couple of things. Thank you.
Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what every person that's been involved in this from day one has said. This is a tragedy. We all recognize that. It is the first police shooting in the city of Elgin in 20 years. So, it is a very rare occurrence. It is not something widespread. Now, I have questions, first with Hilliard and Hines. I want to thank you for your professionalism, the details of your report, your unbiased way of looking at this and trying to come up with answers. Okay? But here's my question, policy question for you and your recommendations for the city of Elgin Police Department. In regards to dealing with mental illness, I heard that repeated over and over. What I didn't hear, though, and I'm wondering if the protocols change at all, is dealing with people who are under the influence of drugs or alcohol. Is there a difference? If there isn't difference, Chief Lally, you're more than welcome to jump in because I have a question for you next. If it's different, and mental illness is one set of circumstances, and I know there's different types of mental illness, I've done my research on this too. But the drug and alcohol part of it was part of this scenario that took place on I-90. The toxicology reports have not been mentioned here today. Is there a difference in what you're recommending to our police department in dealing with this?
Well, I think there's two things here, right? It's altered mental capacity, and that could be either through intoxicology or intoxicated state or through mental illness. I don't know that we can expect law enforcement officers to make an immediate assessment. But in overall circumstances, what we know is that the reactions of persons in an altered mental capacity are sometimes different than that of the people who are, you know, human beings are, you know, not necessarily logical. And that issue becomes more exacerbated when there's affecting circumstances, either through mental illness or intoxicology. And so, our focus in terms of the actions of Lieutenant Jensen, we're really, again, not looking at the overall state of Ms. Clemens or those circumstances that affect the department as a whole, but as how they affected the incident at the time. And so, holding Mr., sorry, Lieutenant Jensen accountable to his policies and what those required of him at the time.
My question was not about the Jensen actions or inactions. My question was about your recommendations for policy changes within the city of Elgin. That's my question. Because I understand mental illness and alcohol and drug addiction combined can cause other problems too. But we'll let that one go because I don't think you quite understood my question unless Chief Lally thinks you've got it.
Yeah. So, to your question, if there's a difference between someone who is suffering from a mental health episode or if they're intoxicated due to whether it's drugs or alcohol? So, that would depend on the circumstances and the situation. And so, a lot of times too, how the officers get to that this person is in a mental health episode or crisis is the precursors before. So, a lot of times, we're called to someone's home for a suicidal subject. Or their actions, they ingest pills, or they attempt some procedure to commit suicide. That is very clear indicators that someone is suffering from a mental health episode. The communication, and that's the thing here, some of the behaviors that Ms. Clemens displayed could be considered both. And, you know, to Ms. Kirby's point where she said that it's unclear as to what was going on in her mind because she was displaying different things. Officers did see drug paraphernalia. They also then, she was displaying some behaviors where, that led Lieutenant Jensen to believe that she was in a mental health episodes. There are some things, again, it's depending upon the circumstances and also, a lot of times, communication. So, when you are able to effectively communicate with someone, you establish communications, which what officers were trying to do. You get more clues, more indicators by people's statements as well. So, it's behaviors, it's statements, it's the totality of what is happening in that incident.
Okay. So, then you've answered my question in the long way. The protocols would be the same for a mental illness situation if you assess it as that as a police officer, as somebody intoxicated under the influence, correct?
It would depend. So, the, and why I say that is because if you have, for example, if you have someone who is intoxicated and they are unresponsive, they're just laying on the ground. That would require a different response than somebody who is intoxicated but displaying or saying behaviors of mental illness.
We'll leave that one go then. We'll talk about it another time. Second question, I know the answer already. Councilwoman Martinez brought it up. The training for our police officers facing an armed suspect versus an unarmed suspect, real quick, because then I have a final question that should be short to all of you. There is a difference in how officers are trained to handle armed and unarmed suspects. True or false?
So, the officers are trained in response to resistance. Response to resistance is covered by our policy, which everyone has. And in there, the force continuum, and depending on the circumstances presented, yes, officers have different responses. The force continuum, again, depending on what is going on, whether or not it would be effective or not effective, less lethal options are sometimes deployed. It is a circumstance, circumstances will depend, and that will also dictate what type of response to resistance an officer employs.
Okay. My final question is a very short one, and it's for all of you. There is a term out there in the real world called suicide by cop. Would you address it, any of you, or wish to address that comment? I'm not saying it applies here, but I want to, I just want to throw that out there because I know it's a real term. It does happen. I'm just asking questions here, okay? Please, thank you. Anybody want to tackle? If not, I'll just drop the question, okay?
I'll answer it generically, but not, it raises to this investigation at a level. And that sometimes you do see people, and it's been reported in other jurisdictions, not here, that somebody's made a determination that they're going to approach a police officer armed, knowing that likelihood the outcome will result in death.
That's all I was asking. Thank you very much. I'm done.
We have the other two people get their chance first. Ms. Rachenberg.
I want to thank, as my fellow councilpersons have, thank everyone, the public, the city of Elgin, the Elgin Police Department, and my condolences to the Clemens family. It has been a tough year plus for all of us. I have just a couple of basic questions. What role did you think Hartman played? And do you think that his inability or lack of response is difficult in this situation?
Well, are you asking whether or not the ability that we couldn't interview him played a role in our investigation?
Right, right.
Yes. Yes, I think, I think the inability to interview him could have been, we could have had more, it could have been helpful. There were some holes that he possibly could have plugged with some answers.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. That was unfortunate that he wouldn't respond. Was Jensen's, I didn't go through all the tapes, but some of them, was Jensen's body worn camera on during those last minutes of the incident?
Yes.
And those minutes are there, it didn't sort of say whose camera was, who's in the...
There were two instances where Lieutenant Jensen's camera was off. The first instance was about for 30 seconds. And that's when he had a conversation with Master Sergeant Margaret Scherzer, the ISP.
Okay.
The second incident was about 31 minutes, as Chief Lally stated. And it was, I want to say it was between 1:30 and 1, you know, just before the fire started.
So, there's other footage of, or did he have the...
Yeah. So, it's, and we know that at that time Lieutenant Jensen was inside his squad car.
Okay. Oh, yeah. No, it was just, I didn't look at all of them, so I didn't see his direct, and I know he was holding a shield, correct?
During, at the, in the end, yes.
Yeah. So, did that block, didn't block any?
It obscured a lot of the footage from his body camera.
That's what I mean.
We also, but you've got to remember, there were seven other officers on scene that, and that's the one thing, you know, we reviewed this camera from different angles and different officers. So, what one officer didn't capture, the other cameras captured. And then you had the towway, fixed towway cameras in that location that captured the entire event also, without the audio.
Also, when was a fire truck called? Does, is there a notification at any time when the car started on fire? Did any officer call a fire truck?
Yes. Hoffman Estates Fire Protection District was summoned.
Within an appropriate time?
When the fire started, yes.
Okay. And there was, it seemed as though it was anywhere from three feet to eight feet that the officers were close to the door when Cynthia came out, Cynthia came out.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, there's not a set how far away he was? It seemed in various places it had different numbers about how far away Officer Jensen was from the door of the car.
Officer Jensen was between three to seven feet of that vehicle door.
Okay, three to seven, that's the, and so, there was autopsy or toxicology report on Cynthia?
Yes.
And was there a mention of how much, for example, smoke inhalation she had in her lungs from sitting in a car for approximately two minutes with probably burning plastic?
Well, there was mention that she had smoke inhalation in her lungs, yes. An amount, I don't think there was mention of an amount.
Okay. Because it seems to me that would have been a difficult thing for her. Also, were there, when she was exiting that car, were there lights shining at her so that her vision would have been obscured by bright lights?
I don't know that. I don't know that.
I mean, it seems as though she...
Well, we, the patrol vehicle, police patrol vehicle lights were activated, so... Well, you, we, the patrol vehicle, police patrol vehicle lights were activated, so there would have been plenty of flashing lights there.
Right. I'm just saying, did she have a clear view of when she turned away toward those officers, the light was shining at her? The question is what she could see.
I can't get into that, what she saw.
Okay. I think that, I also had that question about how she exited the car. And I know during previous to the, you know, when they were trying to take a slow approach, I know Officer Jensen was doing a great job, you know. He said that there was, you know, talk of her having, you know, a mental state. And he said things, someone mentioned her ability to follow directions is impaired, we have to know that. If she comes toward us, these are quotes, if she comes toward us, use a taser, get the taser ready. So this was in everyone's mind. So I think that, and my thought is when that door opened and she made those sounds, again, she could have been very much, the smoke was so thick in that car, she could have been gasping for air. And I think that she was angry that probably the situation was not turning out in her way. But I feel as though she also, I wouldn't say aggressive, from my view of it, it looked like she was just coming out of the car, took one step, and she was trying to get out of a, you know, as any person would in a burning car. I don't think you're gonna step out quietly. So I think that was one of my situations too. I think I had a different viewpoint. And also, I know this is, what we're talking here is about not just Elgin, Illinois, but it's about a country and a world police, you know, how we treat individuals and what we think is response to resistance or I, to me, it comes down to this idea of assessment of threat. We had a woman who is known to the police, who we know can't follow, they said inability to follow directions, her ability to follow directions is impaired. She's been, she is having some sort of either mental or drug-induced crisis. She does have knives, they know she has knives, this was no surprise. And she was tiny, we had many policemen, and finally, we did have Officer Jensen who took the lead, which, you know, and he had a shield. So I think all, somehow I would assess, to me, and she was a small person, all of these things put together, I understand, I wasn't there, I didn't have to make that decision, and, you know, I feel for Officer Jensen and his family. But to me, that's where, it comes down to that assessment of what was the threat. If it had been a very different situation with, we know there was a gun in the car or three people in the car or other things like that. So I come down to that idea of assessment of threat and I wish the taser had been the only thing used possibly. One last question, then I will turn it over. Officer Jensen said in his interview, "I've never been trained to do a shield bash." So again, he held a big shield that was really in front of him and between the other officers. They knew, they knew she had a knife, that she was this tall. Is there such a thing as a shield bash? Should he have known how to use that? Was that an option? And should we be training on shield bash?
That's yours, Chief.
So I just want to go back to one other thing that you had mentioned about the amount of carbon monoxide that was in her lungs. That's actually in the Illinois State Police report. I believe it was 9%, which the medical examiner revealed that that was not, not, that was non-fatal, so it is in the Illinois State Police, not in Hillard Hines. So to your question about shields, so shields are meant as a protection against whether that's bullets, whether that's knives, shields are not meant to direct or redirect. To your point about training, yes, we actually have a class that will be taking place next week on utilization of the shield and techniques. So that was something that we did identify and we've already started to implement training.
So there is a thing called? There is such a thing called a shield bash?
I don't know, I don't know that term. I don't know what Lieutenant Jensen, where he received that, I have no, I don't know that term.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Shaw.
Like everyone else, I believe it was a tragedy as well, and I believe like Councilman Stefan said, we can do better because that's always our goal to do better and improve. But I also think it's time to move forward. Couple of questions that I have regarding the report. Through your investigation, you've seen the state report, you've seen the interviews that you've done yourself, you see the body camera. Are there any major discrepancies that have you concerned about the quality of, and the ability for you to do a complete analysis of this situation?
No, we didn't find any inconsistencies.
So no statements from one officer that was a complete discrepancy against another officer or against the video?
No, they were, they were all consistent.
I'm not sure, this might be for Chief Lally. Is there, is there a reason that Officer Hartman was not interviewed by the state police right after the incident in March of 2018?
I believe he was interviewed.
He was.
In the state police, correct?
Okay, I'm, that's my fault, I missed that piece then. I guess layering on that question back to Hillard Hines, then, based on the interview that the state police did, did you find anything from Officer Hartman that helped fill in some of those gaps? Because I know that the questioning that you do for your investigation is much more interactive, it's back and forth, it's much more probing versus I believe what the state's, Illinois State Police do in their report is more just take statements, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, we read his report, reviewed his body camera footage. The questions that we might have had, you know, was to what degree did he attempt to contact Ms. Clemmons' family, the numbers that he used, where the numbers came from, things like that.
Gotcha. Back to Chief Lally regarding Officer Hartman. Would in a normal situation, would, due to the ranks, I mean, would Officer Hartman have been the, the lead, I guess, taking care of this incident and then Officer Jensen would have been more directing? Is that typically how that would have worked?
So depending on circumstances, because this incident, obviously, the patrol officers, the sergeant and the lieutenant, they hear this going on. They recognize that this is a larger incident that may require some additional resources, more guidance, that's why they respond out.
Gotcha.
At that point, depending on people's roles, and you have to remember Sergeant Hartman was acting in the role of a negotiator. So it did remove him from, because he was the only trained negotiator on scene. There were, I believe, two other officers who were trained in CIT. He was the only trained negotiator, so that role at that point is pivotal and very important, which is why Lieutenant Jensen is more managing the scene at that time.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just in response to some of the other questions that have been asked in the dais today, if I'm not mistaken, there was a comment about, you know, since he's not a part of a bargaining union, what protections he has. It's come to my attention that there is also state law that governs police officers who are not a part of bargaining units. Would you be able to just comment publicly on what that state law is or what that is?
Maybe Corporation Council wants to explain that and probably can do a better job than I can.
Councilman, I believe you're referring to a provision within the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Act, which in general provides that police officers can't be discharged except on cause after notice of charges in a hearing. The city has adopted a home rule ordinance which has modified that slightly, which still has the same cause standard in it. The members of the collective bargain agreement are subject to a grievance arbitration process, which would include arbitration. The non-bargaining unit members or management of the police department are also subject to similar ordinance provisions, but provide for a grievance process of, provide for a cause standard, and then also a grievance process which for any discipline, an excessive suspension of five days, which would also include removal or discharge, would allow for a arbitration hearing before a neutral arbitrator.
Is it fair to say then that the term like "at will" does not directly apply then to police officers then under that provision?
That's correct. They, under a cause provision, the court said that constitutes what's known as a property interest for constitutional purposes, which requires due process.
Gotcha, thank you. One of the other pieces I think that's lost inside of this is it's, we're looking at the last piece of Officer Jensen's decision-making and there's questioning about that, but we somehow seem to forget the fact that why he is there to begin with at all. Why is he there? Well, there's a fire, vehicle's on fire. And if you read through his interview and the questions that were asked, he's in there from a life-saving perspective, that's why he's in the position that he's in, is because he's attempted to try to save her life. She started her car on fire, and if he doesn't do something, then he's at risk of being charged for not doing something. So I think that's lost in the, in the comments that have been made today and through this process, that we seem to forget the full entirety of the situation. I'm just concerned that some of the, that we're not, with the direction that we're heading and some of the questioning is not about moving forward, but it's about trying to continue to go down the same path that we've been going down for so many months. Now we have the factual information, we have the report, we have the findings, and yet we continue to somehow want to look around those findings and want to, how to somehow rewrite the facts that have been provided to us. And I'm concerned that that will lead us not to a future of where our community can move past this and heal, but to a continual upheaval and concern where there's not that trust between the community and our officers.
Look at Terry now.
I don't have any further questions at this point, thank you.
I have, I have some questions. And in regard for the time, if you have backup questions or follow-up questions, let's try to keep them a little bit brief, but I have some questions, and these are pretty much for Hillard Hines, on policy. Compare Elgin's policies to accepted practices in the region and nationally. Are we, are we in the same ballpark with everybody else?
You're basically consistent with what's happening across the country, particularly with the revisions that happened subsequently, relative to force, yes.
Okay. And in your report and your recommendations, you reference the City of Champaign's External Review Commission. I've read the report, Councilman Powell shared that with me, and that's something that we're willing to look forward to. Why would, why did you pick them out?
Because they're established here in Illinois and they had similar circumstances in terms of community size. There's a little bit of differentiation based on the fact that it's a university town, but the ease of review and whether or not that translates to Elgin was identified for that reason.
That would be something that we'd have to determine. There were testimonies that were collected, both by the state police and by Hillard Hines. How do you do those interviews? How do you collect that testimony? Is a lawyer present? I noticed that Mr. Jensen had a court reporter record his. Was that the, basically the policy or were these done by tape recorder? How was that done?
And I'll let Carl speak to that.
And are these people sworn? I guess is the next question. Is this a sworn testimony?
All the interviews were recorded with the Elgin Police Department officers. They're, they were present with an attorney. They had their own, they had their attorneys present. We had a court reporter at Jensen's interview for the ease of transcription because we wanted to move this report forward, and the court reporter felt it would be easier for her to transcribe the recording if she had been present at the interview.
Okay.
And it's the same court reporter that I believe the city of Elgin uses in their internal matters.
Okay.
I didn't answer that question, but there was, nobody was sworn at the interview.
It's just testimony and a review as to what happened in the incident.
It's an interview.
Okay. This is for, I guess for both of you, Chief Lally and for Hillard Hines. Because this was a draft policy for a lot of questions about the cameras, this was a draft policy, would we, or would other communities have gone through any kind of extensive training on a draft policy before it's finalized?
Yes, I mean, it's common to, we're implementing the technology, so we need to have guidance. The guidance comes from the law, so everything in the law is incorporated in the draft policy. Draft policy allows movement for practical applications of the law in the policy, and that's what we were working through because we, and again, we had no one to copy from. And so we were trying, this was a new law in Illinois, we were one of the first departments to implement the body camera, so we're basically, you know, we're, a lot of times departments will take other information from other departments, which is what we're getting now with the body camera. People ask for our policy. They asked for, you know, how did you implement? How did you choose your cameras? So we were setting the standards and we were setting, you know, choosing to do that. So there were some things that we needed to kind of make our way through and work through.
Okay, so it was just, yeah.
And the reason that we identified that it was draft is that under the law, the law enforcement agency is required to have a policy. And so I just want to make sure that we're consistent here, because I want to have it very clear is that the draft policy is what the department trained to and what officers were enacting under. Its draft status is the issue that we identify as part of the ability to what subsequently happens. But they followed what were the guidelines under the law, which required that policy that, which was frankly, and still remains somewhat variable because the law doesn't clearly define some aspects of the use of body worn camera.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing, and this is just something that I read in the reports and I read through hundreds of pages now. Officer Joniak was, as part of the team that was in that, in that group. I don't know what his, I don't know where his role was and what his location was, but he made a statement that he had also started to pull his gun, that he felt threatened. And so that would mean that three people that, of the four that were there, felt threatened and his, felt that his life was, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I have. So we have some follow-up questions and let's try to keep them brief because we want to let, we want to be able to read these that are coming forward here. So Ms. Partitas.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is in regards to the ambulance. Can somebody explain what's the, what is the reason for calling an ambulance? In this case, I realize there's mental illness and the influence of drug, but with the ambulance, calling the ambulance, does that make a difference in the outcome or, you know, just so that we understand, why should we always call an ambulance when any of these incidents are happening?
So again, depending on circumstances, having an ambulance immediately available allows for a quicker response of any type of medical care. However, there have been and continue to be, there's incidents where we do deal with people who are in a mental health situation, distress, and our practice has been to, we will transport them to the hospital. So there, it just depends on the circumstances, depending on if this is a person who has made suicidal statements, the ambulance is not necessarily needed, we'll take them up to the hospital to receive services. An ambulance on scene, depending on the situation, the circumstances, what's going on, provides, and the ambulance will stage, I want, you know, that's the other thing too. The ambulance stages until that scene is secure, that is when they'll go ahead and administer aid or whatever it is that, that needs to be done. So they're on scene, they're staged, they're not intervening in the incident, that's not their role. They will only intervene once that scene is secure and safe for all parties involved.
And the one who does that determination would be obviously the person in charge, the police department.
Correct.
They'll say, "It's safe, you can come in," and, okay.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted clarity on that, thank you.
Okay. Anybody down here have a follow-up? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, going back to mental health, was EPD, and this is for Chief, obviously, but was EPD aware of any mental health issues that Ms. Clemmons had prior to this incident?
So I believe in the information provided by the Illinois State Police in the CAD notes, there was a notation that I believe in 2015, we had an incident where she was suicidal. Absent that, there was, I think we had maybe some minor contact with her outside of a mental health capacity.
Okay, so we, coming onto the scene, we knew that we were dealing with somebody who had a mental health history of some type of sort?
There, and I don't know the exact timing, but yes, at some point that that information was relayed that in 2015, that there was a call for service with Ms. Clemmons that did involve a suicidal incident.
Okay, all right. That's all for now, that's all.
Okay, anybody down? Mr. Stefan? Anybody down? Mr. Stefan.
Just quickly, two areas, but to that point that Councilman Dixon just mentioned, I heard on the tape of the 20-minute tape with then-Chief Swoboda narrating, you could hear somebody, I believe over an intercom, relaying to the people, the officers on the scene that, the counselor noted that she had had active auditory hallucinations. That's a quote I got from listening to that tape once more. So I think there was quite a bit of evidence that she was under mental stress and having an episode. But just two quick areas, and I've asked you this, Chief Lally, in other contexts, and having read everything, I'm still asking it. What was during, during the encounter to assess the possibility that, that Cynthia had a firearm or a, I know you don't like this, more lethal weapon? A weapon that she could have reached for and harmed the officers without having to leave her seat? Shotgun, a rifle, pistol? And during the incident, was somebody assigned to monitor her because of that risk of her becoming lucid and remembering she had a gun in the glove compartment or something? So...
So is your question, did officers, were they able to know if there was another weapon, a deadly weapon?
What was done to assess that risk or to determine whether it was present or not?
I think the, the key point is that she had moved her vehicle 11 times. And so trying to make contact to determine and to assess what they could see in the vehicle happened upon the initial contact with Officer Joniak, where he did notice one of the knives. And then when they make contact with her on, on I-90, they make some other determinations about what is in the vehicle. However, I think because they were trying to negotiate, they were keeping distance, they were using time, that determination would not be able to be made unless we were able or in a position to have conversation to ask, do you have anything in there, in your vehicle? But again, we were still trying to establish that communication so that we could get more information than to make further decisions.
So if I understand your answer and what I read, every time an officer tried to approach, even on the other side of the Jersey wall, she would pull up or pull back, she would move her car. That was kind of the response that she had?
Correct. And so they eventually moved with her and decided to pin the vehicle because they wanted to establish communication. But they wanted to do it in a safe manner, in a distance that's appropriate. And, you know, once the vehicle was on fire, the officers then approached to extract her from the vehicle, which, again, you know, had that not occurred, their, their plan was time and distance and trying to establish communications.
Well, and, thank you. And the last thing is, I think what I'm struggling with, and I think others are struggling with, because you read, you read Officer Jensen's statements in the interview the state police did, and then the interview you did, and when he's describing what his plan was up until the point when the door opened and things changed, he talked about approaching, opening the door and standing by, is what he said in his one statement. The other one, it was a little more cryptic. It was pin, break, hit, assess. But to me, that means he was planning, and apparently he had in his hand the spring-loaded device that shatters windows, glass breaker, right? And the shield. That was what he described his plan was, and then he said he was going to hand that off to Officer Hall. So the, you know, the issue I have with that is that it appears that his plan was to put himself in harm's way. He was going to approach the door, shatter the window or open it, and be standing right next to somebody with two knives, whether she was seatbelted or not. So that's, that, to me, is where the difficulty lies, because it appears that his plan was up to that point was to put himself in danger. And then the door opens and the plans change significantly, and the outcome too. So that's, I just wanted to make that observation.
Okay. Any other follow-ups? Ms. Powell.
Quick follow-up on the use of the shield. And this is for Hillard Hines, because I know that Chief Lally has already addressed some training that is going to be taking place. Is this the only training that has taken place with our officers on the use of a shield?
So our tactical response team, they are trained in the use of a shield, but it's not, our officers have not received advanced training on how to utilize a shield. The shields are only in supervisors' vehicles, and also our tactical response team has shields. So I could tell you that in the past, no, that the, the training on the shield has been very basic. So this is why we're implementing shield training, because we recognize and understand that that is something that we do need to do.
But as far as Lieutenant Jensen's background in particular, I know that he's been assigned to several different units. He would have previously received some of that previous training as a member of the TAC unit.
Correct.
So he was trained in the use of the shield.
But I don't know exactly what his training encompassed. So I think that's when he made that statement about some, the shield bash. I'm not exactly sure what his training encompassed when he received training.
Okay. For Hillard Hines, what are best practices from your understanding of use of shields in other police departments? Best practices that you can speak of?
Yeah, so, yeah, here's the challenge, and we've been in cities where equipment has been attempted to use to create some sort of distance and protection. A ballistic shield is not necessarily a weapon. It shouldn't be used as a weapon. And so this whole concept of shield bash is perhaps not good practice, right? And so I think if anything becomes to a certain, you know, situation where you have nothing else, and that's what you're doing, but the shield is truly a ballistic protection.
It's a barrier.
Yeah, it's a barrier. It's not meant as a force weapon, and so that would not have been the appropriate use for that shield at that circumstance, in my opinion, at that time. In terms of national practices, there's a whole host of federal government-type training for large-scale demonstrations. Those are the tendencies of shields, or like doing active search warrants where you have a high, you were the one talking about threat assessment. You know, there's a high threat there, and so you're, you're creating a barrier. But they're not intended to be used as a tool. Is there training that focuses on its use as a tool? Very well, maybe, but it's not a routine type of focus for that shield. Anything I missed on that, Carl?
No, it's a ballistic shield. That's what, we, we took a look at the shield while we were doing the investigation and looked at suspects on it and things like that. They are, they are truly a ballistic shield. I, I think when Lieutenant Jensen, again, my opinion is Lieutenant Jensen was referring to shield bashing, he was, I think it was his hopes that he could have used the, the shield to pin Ms. Clemens until they could have had time to subdue her. But time did not allow for that as it, as it played out.
Or, you know, again, going back to discretion and judgment, the, his judgment at that time was that even with the shield as a barrier, even with the other officers on the scene with use, with non-lethal weapons, the pepper gun, the taser, which she was indeed tased at the same time that she was shot. I guess I'm trying to understand, and again, kind of even going back to what Councilwoman Rauschenberger said in terms of her size and just the totality, again, of everything that's going on, that shield being properly used as a barrier, there, there was an option for him to use that as a barrier to protect himself from, from the threat of, the perceived threat of, of the knives. So I guess, I just, I just bring that up because I don't know, that's something that our people in, in our community have, have asked, legitimate questions. It's a question that I have about options, because again, our officers every day, whether it be here in Elgin or across the country, have a great deal of discretion in how they do their job and have a number of options that are available to them. And I just believe that there were other options, especially with the equipment that they had and the totality of everything that was taking place, knowing that someone has a mental, is having a mental episode. So I, I will leave it at that and, so we can get questions from the public as well. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take a short break here for about 15 minutes, and I would suggest that anybody that has an appointment at 12 o'clock, call them and tell them you're going to be late. Let's start finding our seats, please. We have 65 questions to read. As I said, we have about 65 questions. Karina and Laura will take turns reading questions. We're gonna, we've gone through them. We're going to read every question that was submitted. We took some out that were duplicates, I understand, correct? Okay. And so we're going to read every question. It'll be 65, and we'll anticipate probably be 1:00 before we're done. Okay, Karina, go ahead.
All right. What makes Officer Joniak initial? Okay, there we go. What makes Officer Joniak's initial stop or contact with Cynthia suspicious as you, as you could, as we could? Also could we consider this a racial profiling?
Officer Joniak first observed Ms. Clemens' vehicle parked on a dead-end road in a remote area of Elgin with its operating lights on. The, he did not immediately engage Ms. Clemens' vehicle at that, the initial observation. He was summoned to another call and didn't return to the scene, or he still, for about 30 minutes, until he, and he still saw Ms. Clemens' vehicle still in the same situation with the operating lights on. It's our opinion that Officer Joniak's actions were consistent with what police officers recognized as a suspicious circumstance and a suspicious vehicle, and it was his duty to engage that vehicle and the, and any person within it to investigate the circumstances for its presence on that dead-end road.
Was Lieutenant Jensen's use of body cameras, including turning it off twice, in compliance with Illinois state law?
As the chief identified, she's reviewing to determine whether or not it was in state law. We reviewed to see whether or not it was in compliance with the policy, which is what the department was required under state law to have.
Can this case be reopened due to officer misconduct by turning off body cams?
That's beyond our scope of investigation, but the state's attorney made their determination based upon the law. We made our determination based upon the administrative procedures and policies, and so our finding is that there was a violation of the administrative procedures.
Was there the violation of a state law in regards to the operation of Officer Jensen's body camera or on the night in which Ms. Clemens was killed?
Yeah, and, and so that's, I think there's been a lot of question about that, and as it's been discussed, is that whether or not it's interpreted that the encounter between two officers complies with state law is really a subject for the city attorney and the chief. But we identified that, in fact, it did violate policy in what he did.
Why didn't Joniak ever activate his body camera?
That was during the initial encounter on Cedar Road, and we don't, we don't know why Joniak didn't operate his body camera. We know that when he arrived on Cedar and investigated Clemens' vehicle, he parked his patrol vehicle in front of Clemens' vehicle, so that would have prevented his in-car camera from recording the incident. And the encounter was so brief there on Cedar, he just may not have activated it.
Why was the Elgin police on the highway?
When Officer Joniak pursued Clemens after she committed the traffic violation at Dundee, Dundee Road, she, of course, we know, Ms. Clemens continued onto I-90 eastbound. At that time, Officer Joniak was already in pursuit of Ms. Clemens' vehicle to stop it, but the pursuit was terminated by Sergeant Hartman as Joniak entered I-90 on the ramp. Officer Hall, who was going to assist Officer Joniak, was headed in that direction, and they eventually turned around at the next exit and came back westbound on I-90 where they encountered Ms. Clemens' vehicle now on the westbound side. It's, it's believed that Ms. Clemens used a turnaround median prior to the exits, the east exit, where she ended up now facing westbound on I-90.
Did Officer Jensen ask Sergeant Hartman to turn his body camera off?
He did not.
Regarding the policies dealing with body-worn cameras, what differences or effects are there on the findings and on Lieutenant Jensen's future between what the draft policies say and what the current at-the-time policies say?
I'm sorry, could you reread that?
Yeah. What differences or effects are there on the findings and on Lieutenant Jensen's future between what the draft policies say and what the current, what the current policies say? When does a draft policy become effective for police officers to follow?
Right. And, and so that is the issue that we've raised. In our opinion, we found Lieutenant Jensen in violation of the existing policy, which was draft. And so relative to his future decision in terms of the department, that's a legal review that will be conducted by both the chief and the city.
Which versions of the policies did the Illinois State Police and the Cook County State's Attorney's Office review?
To my understanding, what they would review is what was in place at the time of the event. You can't review somebody for subsequent policy changes, so it would be at the time. But the state's attorney also really does a criminal law review.
Whose body camera footage did you review in, in making the determination that Ms. Clemens charged?
We reviewed, we reviewed everybody's body camera footage at every angle that was available, including the tollway camera footage. And based on our review, the visual evidence that we reviewed, and based on officer statements, we concluded that Ms. Clemens charged at the officers.
What is the purpose of body cam dash cam if, if you're not going by what they show, or was it turned off?
That question's a little bit confusing, but what we will say is that when you do an investigation, you look at all the available evidence, and so interviews are as important as body cameras as are CCTV cameras. Each camera shows a lens and a perspective. The more you have, the more informed your investigation is.
Why would EPD be on I-90 when it was called off? Isn't that the state trooper's part?
Again, as, as I stated earlier, Officer Joniak pursued Ms. Clemens' vehicle as it traveled onto I-90, and his pursuit was terminated by Sergeant Hartman. They continued... traveled onto I-90, and his pursuit was terminated by Sergeant Hartman. They continued on I-90, that would be Officer Joniak and Officer Hall, continued on I-90 to turn around at the next exit where they ended up proceeding westbound and encountered Ms. Clements' vehicle now on the westbound side.
That is also going to the issue that we raise around jurisdiction and appropriate response. So at the point that that car was pulled over on the side, I believe that there was some interpretation by the department as to service, but you're right, should have been the ISP initially or the department in making sure that they identify appropriate jurisdictions, and that was the basis for that recommendation.
My colleague also wanted to point out that the Illinois Tollway Authority service truck that handles broken-down vehicles was on scene.
Did Johnson get drug tested? Did he get psychological counseling?
That's not for our ability to answer. If the chief would like to answer.
The night of the...or the morning of the incident, yes, Lieutenant Johnson was taken to the hospital, whereupon there was a new...the new law that took place in 2018 where officers involved in a use-of-force situation that included deadly force are mandated to have drug testing, which was completed, and the Illinois State Police, it's actually in the Illinois State Police report, the drug test. And then second, for psychological counseling, is that the second?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So per our departmental policy, before an officer returns back to duty, whenever that may be, if that is, they do have to go and see a counselor immediately after. We have them go, however, they may then retain some services themselves thereafter if they feel that they do need to have some additional services provided.
Does Hillard Hines recommend Johnson be terminated?
That's not within the extent of what we were conducting. We did our findings and recommendations, our findings and determinations.
Can the family request this case be reopened at the highest level?
I think that there's always the opportunity to go to another source in terms of whether or not you feel your investigation's been completed appropriately.
Is it possible for Johnson, since he probably has enough years in, 20, to do a buyout and/or retire?
I would leave that to the department, but I think an officer always has a personal decision as to whether or not they want to continue to work.
Did Lieutenant Johnson leave his role as command officer by moving to a role of engaged officer? Why?
So I think that's the challenge with a fast-moving situation, even though this took a period of time, is that you had a lieutenant on the scene, and under normal circumstances, that would be the officer in charge, right? But because he was directly involved, it kind of muted that determination, and so that was also part of our recommendation under policy, is to allow for certain specific standardized calls, particularly when there's a senior officer involved.
Is Sergeant Hartman still a police officer with Elgin, and also what's his nationality?
I'll leave that to you, chief.
Sergeant Hartman retired shortly after this incident, and to his nationality, I don't know what his nationality is. He is an African-American police officer. I don't know his nationality, per se, but he retired shortly after the incident.
What were the results of Officer Johnson's mental state analysis on the evening of the incident and most recent medical exam?
We're not privy to that information, and I don't believe the chief is either, correct?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What were the results of Officer Johnson's mental state analysis on the evening of the incident and most recent medical exam?
I do not have that information.
Would it be possible and beneficial to subpoena Sergeant Hartman, retired?
So the real issue is that Sergeant Hartman did make a statement to the state when they were investigating the criminal aspect of this review. As my colleague identified is that we were able to fully substantiate the incident and what occurred in that incident. Would Sergeant Hartman have been able to provide some additional information? Certainly, in terms of what he was able to do around negotiations and be able to more fully inform the investigation, but we feel that we were able to complete our investigation in an appropriate manner with the information we had.
Is EPD aware of any officer complaints over the decisions made by Officer Johnson that morning?
As far as an official complaint, where a complaint form has a formal complaint, there has not been any. However, obviously, through council presentations and statements at council and community conversations, yes, we are aware of the concerns surrounding this incident.
Is Investigator DeGrassi still employed by Hillard Hines? What is her law enforcement background?
DeGrassi, yes, she is still employed by Hillard Hines. She is a lawyer. She conducts administrative investigations for us as well as a variety of law firms in terms of behaviors of employees. Her prior history was as a lieutenant with the Illinois State Police.
Has Officer Johnson or other officers shown or indicated that they know Ms. Clements personally?
We don't have that information.
Did Johnson receive CIT training?
At the time of the incident, Lieutenant Johnson did not have CIT training.
I just want to know what video camera was...was it that showed her with one foot on the ground if they were turned off?
Yeah, we don't know which specific video camera, and that was but one comment. We looked at all the surrounding cameras as well as the tollway, any video present.
And some of these are duplicate, but I will read those, okay. Why were the body cameras turned off?
We're not sure for the reasons behind that, but we did identify it as a violation of the policy.
Did Lieutenant Johnson violate state law by turning off his body camera during the incident?
Yeah, and I think we've talked about that. There may be some level of interpretation, but we do know that it was a violation of the policy.
For Chief Lally, will you interview Lieutenant Johnson's superiors and ask them why they didn't instruct calling an ambulance? Would any superior be disciplined?
The investigation and more information that I would request and still need to get may fall and may ask those questions. So the information that's been provided is through the Illinois State Police, the Cook County State's Attorney's Office, Hillard Hines, and so there may be some additional questions that I may ask.
Even if Johnson had requested an ambulance at 1:05, would this have changed the outcome of the incident?
We can't make a determination as to what would have or would not have happened. It's a clear policy violation, and as the chief identified, ambulances are staged away from what is called, you know, the red scene, so we can't make that determination.
How many minutes went by from the time she lit the car on fire from the time she opened the door?
It wasn't a long period of time. The car got...was engulfed fairly quickly, a matter of minutes.
There was talk on the video about breaking the window. Is there something in rescue mode that prevented them from breaking the passenger-side window and possibly using a taser to rescue her from her burning car?
We didn't...we did not look at what could have been done differently. What we did look at were the actions of the officers that night and how they applied to policy.
Additionally, as identified under the policy recommendations, the patrol officers are not trained in the use of the window break and extrication, and so that's the basis for that recommendation.
How much time elapsed from the time that Officer Johnson first indicated that Ms. Clements was under mental distress and the time she was shot?
Approximately one hour.
After DeCynthia exited the car, how many steps toward the officers did she take before she was shot?
To my recollection, it was within one or two feet.
What type of knife did Ms. Clements hold? What were the lengths of the knives?
Common steak knife.
So the question was, like, what type of knife did Ms. Clements hold? Was it a butcher knife?
Common steak knife.
Huffman Estates FD told investigators they got a call about a suicidal subject. Who made that call?
That would have been the Illinois State Police and Elgin.
Do you think Officer Johnson would shoot my white daughter?
What was the question?
There's no answer to that.
Do you think Officer Johnson would shoot my white daughter?
There's no answer to that on our end.
How did other interviews describe the exit of DeCynthia from the car? What other words were used other than "charge" and "aggressive"?
To my recollection, the officers were pretty consistent on how they described Ms. Clements exiting that vehicle in an aggressive, charging manner.
Was the taser fired before or after the shots by Johnson?
It was simultaneous.
Was there a notice provided of taser fire to officers before firing?
No.
Were there recommendations offered by on-scene officers to Officer Johnson for reaching a resolution to this incident? If so, were they incorporated into the plan?
Each officer was asked if they had input and suggestions for how to bring the situation to a resolution, and they all felt that they had input on the planning and eventual lineup at the end.
What is the EPD's view of the decision and assessment of Officer Johnson to go on-scene for such an incident?
Supervisors in the police department are tasked with supervising officers, and part of that supervision requires direction. Also, part of that supervision requires that they're on-scene to make those determinations, to request additional resources, to make decisions that some officers may not be familiar with, and so having a supervisor on-scene, especially of an incident where it's a prolonged time period, is a common occurrence.
How do you justify the change of plans that resulted in the officer not adhering to it?
Change of plans?
Well, I think if I understand the question correctly, the change of plan occurs when Ms. Clements' vehicle became engulfed in flames, the officers went into a rescue mode and lined up to attempt to extricate her from that burning vehicle in a rescue mode. It wasn't until she came out of that vehicle aggressively and charged at them with a knife in each hand that that changed.
We have questions from the podium, please.
What kind of armor or protective gear were the officers wearing?
They had their ballistic shield present, and they all were in their ballistic vests.
If Officer Johnson had not violated the policy of calling for other health professionals when a citizen is having a mental episode, then would it have been possible for the intervention of other health professionals and their foremen, Ms. Clements, to not have been shot and killed?
We can't answer that question, but clearly that's the reason policies are there, is to try to create those types of outcomes.
Lieutenant Johnson was carrying a shield at the time of the shooting. The shield is a powerful...is a powerful... offensive and defensive device in close proximity encounters. Lieutenant Johnson chose to draw his weapon over the use of the shield to subdue Ms. Clements or defend himself. Did you consider the use and possession of the shield in your investigation, and what was your conclusion?
Again, as we discussed earlier, the shield is really bent as a defensive mode. Our investigation identified that Lieutenant Johnson responded to the threat that he saw.
The plan by the officers was to taser DeCynthia, then use rubber bullets. If she was charging, why did the officers...why did the officer with the rubber bullets not use them? I assume he was interviewed.
There was never...there was never any plan to use rubber bullets, and the less-lethal devices that were present that day were, of course, the taser, the 40-millimeter beanbag device, and the pepper ball device. At the distance that Ms. Clements was from the officer with the beanbag device, that would not have been a good situation because that would have been considered...using that device at the distance that there was, would have been considered lethal force at that time.
Did any mental health professionals participate in this review and the conclusions of this report?
No.
When the vehicle was found, how did the wreckage come up with four flat tires? Did they take into account the comments that were made upon the case? I guess there's a couple of questions here, so we'll start with the first one. When the vehicle was found, how did the wreckage come up with four flat tires?
The original two...there were two tires that were originally found, discovered to be blown out when Officers Joniak and Officers Hall first encountered the vehicle on westbound I-90, assuming that those vehicles...those tires were blown out when Ms. Clements drove the vehicle through the median to get to the other side of the interstate. The other tires most likely, and we don't know this, but most likely blew out when the vehicle was pinned and Ms. Clements tried to escape that maneuver.
Did they take into account the comments that were made upon the case and what family members were called?
I don't really understand that question.
I'm not sure what the question is, but in terms of our investigation, we really look at the reports, the facts, the video. Public comment doesn't necessarily weigh in on these investigations.
And what family members were called?
For the administrative investigation, no family members were contacted.
When did the lounging happen, the 30 minutes that cameras were off?
When did the what?
The lounging.
We've already answered when we have observed that movement.
Were taser barbs present in the body of Ms. Clements?
To my knowledge, one taser barb was collected by the crime scene investigator. I don't recall if it was still in the body or not.
There was one that was tangled up in her hair, and so it doesn't look like it was an effective deployment.
If Ms. Clements was perceived to be a threat life...a threat life or injury, what was Lieutenant Johnson...why was Lieutenant Johnson the only officer using deadly force, i.e. the only one who fired? Were other officers asked in interviews why they didn't shoot?
The plan to extricate or rescue Ms. Johnson from that burning vehicle... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jensen. Ms. Clements, rather. The plan that was directed by Lieutenant Johnson was that he was going to have lethal cover. Officer Hall was to be on the taser. Officer Shutrow and Officer Joniak were the hands team, or the arrest team, and Sergeant Hartman was their backup.
So what Carl's saying, though, is that as this event progressed, the lieutenant was the person responsible with lethal, and the officer responsible for the taser also fired, and then, as we testified earlier, or stated earlier, we're not testifying, Officer Joniak was preparing to pull his weapon because he saw the threat as well.
Did Officer Hall fire his taser first? Did Officer Hall fire his taser first, or did Lieutenant Johnson... and did he fire at the same time? Did Lieutenant Johnson wait to see if the taser was effective or not?
It was simultaneous.
Didn't the EPD try on numerous occasions to contact the family, and didn't those calls go unanswered by the family?
That's correct.
Could her actions while exiting the vehicle result in an injury or death of a police vehicle if one or two of those knives had made contact with an artery based on the close proximity of her and the officers?
Yes.
After the shooting, was the scene safe to render care because she was near a car which was engulfed in flames?
After Ms. Clemens was shot, Lieutenant Jensen directed that officers remove her to a safe distance. But no aid was rendered.
As stated, the lead negotiator, Officer Hartman, I am sure tried repeatedly to call or communicate with this very ill individual by calling out her name. What else could have been done?
I mean, that's not something that we can truly answer at this point, but as you know, that he's tried to reach out to the family, the department, or the officers on the scene, and they also were communicating over the screen. She was still in her vehicle.
For the assessment of threat question raised by Councilwoman Rocheberger, was there one?
Assessment of threat is not necessarily a standardized or identified practice. It goes into the overall totality of circumstances, which is what the officers faced, so I can't answer specifically what threat assessment was conducted.
These next two questions go kind of hand in hand. Is Mr. Kozel going to ask the council for a vote on the future of Officer Jensen? And can and will the mayor and the city council be involved in the decision-making process concerning Officer Jensen?
We can't answer that question.
When will Chief Lally obtain the additional information needed to make the decision on Lieutenant Jensen's future?
I'm already in the process of obtaining the information, so I imagine within the next few weeks here.
How was the response to resistance policy changed in May 2018, and how different was it from the original policy?
I don't have the specific changes that were made, but in particular effect, it was focused on what has been the emerging changes nationally in terms of de-escalation and what officers are required to do on a scene. But if there's a follow-on, we can do that easily.
Does the fact that a draft policy... Okay, does the fact that a draft policy was in place and not a published one mean that an officer cannot be disciplined for violating said policy?
As we said, we can't answer that question. It really is a matter of legal review and administrative review by the organization.
Should adherence to policy and procedure always take precedence over the values and concerns of the community when determining whether an officer should remain employed?
Ideally, both policy and procedure match the vision and concerns of the community.
From the policy review, it sounded as though the SWAT team should have been present. I didn't hear... I did not hear mention of the SWAT team present. Is that correct? And if not, why weren't they called?
The SWAT team was not present, and if I'm speaking out of turn, I'll let Carl identify that they were being called.
Actually, there was... there was a plan in place to move some of the SWAT team officers to the location. Sergeant Lally, a SWAT team commander, was en route. Unfortunately, he didn't get there in time. Officer... Lieutenant Jensen is a SWAT team member. Officer Duffy was on-scene, and he's a SWAT team member. He was directed by Lieutenant Jensen to go get the armored vehicle to assist in the situation, but he was not present when the shooting occurred. But I believe the plan was in place to utilize a small number of SWAT team officers to bring resolution to the situation.
These next two questions deal with body cameras, which have been addressed, but I'm going to read them. Why no charges were brought against Jensen for turning off his camera? And if you think the body cameras are necessary, then why turn them off?
The law is not clear as to what would be the outcome of violation of the law, and in fact, that's been identified in previous discussions amongst the law enforcement community. And I'm sorry, what was the second question?
If you think the body cameras are necessary, then why turn them off?
That's the reason that the policy that was in place at the time was very comprehensive, and that's why we recommend that there was a violation of policy in turning those off.
Why have a non-lethal method to this situation and not use it?
As I stated earlier, there's no such thing in the tools that law enforcement officers use, particularly those present. They're less lethal, and as identified, there was a plan to use less lethal. That plan changed when the car caught on fire and Ms. Clemens emerged.
Why aren't the officers responsible for this becoming a lethal situation? De Cynthia was not provided the medical assistance she needed. Therefore, the officers demanded she behave rationally when she could not. They therefore saved themselves only... only force as an option when she needed medical intervention.
I can't really answer that question because it's a statement of opinion, but the officers took the action they felt necessary.
Is it protocol for an officer to preserve the life of... is there protocol for an officer to preserve the life of the people they come in contact with while on duty?
That's generally the goal, yes.
Is it police protocol to see a woman in a vehicle full of black smoke and fire and not break a window or open a door to get smoke out, or to get a woman out of a vehicle that is on fire and full of thick black smoke?
Again, that's a statement, but my understanding of what was happening there is that they were planning to do that.
Is there a policy as to whether tasing should be used as opposed to the actual shooting of an individual?
So the challenge with that type of an approach is that if you're faced with lethal circumstances, officers have a right under law to respond with lethal circumstances. And so taser policies vary, and it depends upon the circumstance faced by that officer as directed under law.
There are two final questions that I'm going to read that both deal with the word "charge," and then there's three statements that were just made. So I'm just going to read these two in totality, and then I'll read the statements as well. "When defining the word 'charge,' I didn't see much aggression in the video as De Cynthia tried to exit her vehicle, how she made the effort, panic, confusion, and her own sickness. Please play the video of the shooting here in this room this morning so that Hillard Hines can identify what they see De Cynthia do that fits the use of the word 'charge.' To my eyes, De Cynthia seems to stumble and not be fully erect at the moment she is shot. She seems not capable of charging."
That's not a question, so...
And then the final three statements.
It's not a question we can answer in terms of the playing of the video, right?
Correct. The violation of standard operating procedure 42.5.3, the dealing of mental health, violation standard operating procedure 1.5.4, failure to provide first aid, which is the responsibility of the involved employees, and Article 10, Section 10.20 is the minimum required protocol, cannot make them less than what the act requires. And that is... those are the final statements and questions that have been submitted.
Okay. At this time, we can release Hillard Hines. Thank you for your time, and appreciate you spending the morning with us and answering the questions. Thank you very much. Okay, it brings us to that portion of the committee, the whole meeting, where we will entertain public comment. We have... six people have signed up. First one is Danielle Henson. We'll try to hold you to about three minutes, so do your best you can.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and community. Danielle Henson, this is Tish Kalimer. We're from Gilborn Public Library, and I'm also from Elgin City of Peace. David Daubert's in the audience as well. We are hosting Anthony Smith, who's come from Cities United, to have a conversation with us this afternoon at 2:00 in the Elgin Room to discuss the trauma, the process, and next steps as a community. And I know you also are hosting your own community conversations, and I want to thank you for allowing this and showing up today at 2:00 at the Gilborn Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you. George Holmes signed up, I believe. I don't see George Holmes out there. Was he behind the post? I believe he's gone. Charles Clemens.
Good morning, everyone. Afternoon, now. Sitting here.
My battery must have...
As I was fixing to say...
There we go.
I'm going to go back to March 12, 2018, 6:30 in the morning. That's when I got the call from my son telling me that my daughter had been shot. When I arrived at his house, it was an officer there and a priest, and they said that she had been shot one time. As about 10:30, we was down at the police department talking to Chief Swoder. He said she was shot several times. You see where I'm going with this? The narrative keeps changing all the time. All this information, it seemed like it's just starting to come out slowly, drip, 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 which we didn't know. But the fact of it is, we seen the video, and there was skips in it. My family member was here, my daughters was here with me, all of us down there, grandparents. It was a horrific scene, what we seen. And we all left out there in disgust and anger, of course, you know, because we couldn't believe this happened. Anyway, getting to the point of what I'm trying to say is, we have always tried to abide by the law as a whole, as a people. But this thing has just got too complicated for anybody, I guess, because nobody seemed like they know what to say or do. If you're looking at body cams and dash cams and you still don't see the wrongness in this, I don't know what else to say. Cameras don't lie. Pictures don't lie. But when I seen the skips in that video part that they showed us what they wanted to show us, they didn't show us everything. And we didn't find out that she was shot three times or maybe six, seven months later in the head. That was disgusting to me. That is excessive force. Now you said she was shot and tased. How you reconcile with that? I'm just a father. I love my daughter. It's not going to bring her back, but I would love to see justice served, and it don't seem like we can get any. Thank you.
Thank you. Alton Jones? Alton Jones?
The video I saw is the complete opposite of everything I heard here this morning. He killed her, man. If y'all seen that video and you see any other thing than a murder, you covering up for him. Gavin, I don't know where you been since 2017. Cops shooting black people is an epidemic. I don't care that it's only been one here in 20 years. How many has it been in the last two years? This was murder. You can lie in your report, you can lie in your investigation, but you ain't going to lie to what I saw. You need two feet on the ground to move forward. He meant to kill her. Two common steak knives. If your officers cannot detain a 90-pound woman with steak knives, y'all should shut that mo... shut the station down. They need more training. There was no reason for this girl to be killed like this. None. And you use the word "charge." I saw after their investigation how all three officers used the word "charge." They want to make it look like she did something. Them reports are identical, word for word, but they don't match the video. He murdered her. Cold-blooded. Kill shots. He just shoot her in the leg. He shot her in her damn head twice. You come back with any... he come back... he don't... not only should he not come back to his job, his ass need to go to jail.
Watch your language, please, Mr. Jones.
No justice, no peace. Lally, bring him back. I'm done with this.
Earl Silbar.
Cynthia De Clemens' father asked a question. I think I have at least part of an answer to it. And he said... I don't have the exact words because it's a little disturbing still. He wanted to know how we can understand the difference between what we see and what the conclusions are. If we had the last three seconds of her life on video, we would see her coming out of the car, bent over, never upright, holding two small knives, bent over, taking one and towards another step, and bam, 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 she's dead. Like that. Shot in the head and then in the chest. We would see that she was no conceivable rational person, could see that there's a threat in a small person, bent double over, cannot, cannot use that knife to get at somebody high. They don't have any body balance, they don't have any strength. They're stumbling, not charging. The testimony of the man from Hillard Hines, when he was asked the question of how do you define aggressive and charge and a threat, he had a lot of difficulty because that's not what the video shows. As the previous speaker said, I assume everybody in this room has seen the end of that video. Is that right? Everybody on the council has seen it? Right?
Please.
And so the reason that I think we could see such a disparity, to use a nice word, between what we see and what we were told about aggressive behavior gets to the heart of the question. The heart of the question is, could any reasonable person feel threatened in those particular circumstances? So why would people with a lot of legal background, especially the tall gentleman, say that there was aggressive and a threat? Because that's the defense of any policeman who's charged. Did you have a reasonable fear for your life or the people around you? Well, now let's say, who are Hillard Hines, who were commissioned to do this study? If you take someone who is a defense attorney and had that same video, how do you think they would characterize it? This woman was... had a mental situation, had smoke in her lungs, was bent over, and could not have been a threat to anything except the ants under her feet. That's what a defense attorneys would have said. But who is Hillard Hines? Goes to the heart of the question. Hillard Hines is a firm with two heads, Terry Hillard and Mr. Hines, whose first name I don't remember. Terry Hillard was a former police chief of the city of Chicago who was named in four different suits that the city settled for over $20 million for wrongful practice and behavior. Do you think that a firm that he's charged with, that he's the head of, would be responsible for saying the policeman was under no threat? No, not reasonable assumption. Who is Mr. Hines? Mr. Hines is an extremely... was an extremely high-ranking officer in the Secret Service. He is part of the International Association of Police Chiefs, as Mr. Hillard is part of the Illinois Association of Police Chiefs. So we have two people, high in law enforcement... So we have two people high in law enforcement, whose firm has four goals that they gave to us at the beginning of tonight, one of which was to protect the, what's the word? Image, responsibility? Ah, damn. One second, please. I've got it in my notes.
We start wrapping your comments up, Mr. Silbar.
I understand my time is up. To protect the reputation of the groups that they are served to investigate. So their police chiefs with a police bias, like there's any bias, if you have some defense attorneys, they'll have a different bias. They were chosen to give a report, and they gave the report they were asked to give, which is to justify murder.
Jose Bosque.
My name's Jose Bosque. Just have a couple of statements I want to say. In regards to Jensen, he was a highly-trained officer in multiple disciplines within the Elgin Police Department. Part of that training includes situational awareness. Situational awareness is like three different steps. First is the perception, which is the initial assessment of the situation. The second one is the comprehension, which you take all the facts, and at least the third one, which is the decision. This decision led Jensen to leave the role of a command and become engaged, and to place himself and the other officers in danger without fear for his life or that of his fellow officers. There was time after the door opened for him to move back, but he decided to stay in harm's way, because he didn't fear for his life in the first place to get up there. That's one comment. And the other comment was, Chief Lally keeps saying that SB 1304 was a brand-new law, but as any one of us here knows, that regardless of how new the law is, each one of us is held to that standard, and we will be held accountable to that law, regardless if it's new or if we didn't know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chief Lally would like to wrap up with a few comments.
Since the officer-involved shooting that occurred last year on March 12th, it has been the position of the police department to refrain from any public comment or statement so that the independent investigative process could be completed with integrity and without any undue influence. Now that the investigation has concluded, I wish to begin the next steps for the future. Let me start by saying that I recognize that this incident has been very difficult and emotional for many, the family and friends of Cynthia Clements and Lieutenant Jensen, the community, and the members of the Elgin Police Department. For the family and friends of Cynthia Clements, I want you to know that the decisions that have been made throughout the past 16 months and the decisions yet to come have always and will always taken into consideration the tragedy that occurred on March 12th. I want you to know that the police department is an organization that has continued to evolve, to learn, and to grow during this time, and we will continue to do so. I am sorry for this tragedy on many levels and the heartache that many have experienced during this time. Anytime a police officer uses deadly force, the community will be understandably concerned and demand information about the facts and the circumstances. The police department made a commitment to be transparent and open with every part of the process and will continue to be. The loss of any life, especially in the context of an incident that involves deadly force, is always somber and will forever leave an impact on the police department and the community that we police. For the community, I have had many private conversations with numerous people. I have received emails and letters and have heard many different opinions, many thoughts, many emotions and feelings, and have taken into consideration all of this over the past 16 months. I want to say thank you to those who came forward to share with me your words, and I hold these opinions with great respect. Some of these conversations were not always easy, but they were always appreciated. Going forward, it is inevitable that there will not be a path forward that will make everyone satisfied, but my hope is that the path is taken is paved with respect and understanding. And for the police department, I have upheld my responsibility to keep the department always informed of the process and decisions that I have made. And this always started in communicating with Lieutenant Jensen. I have made a commitment to ensure that during this past year, that you know the exceptional work that occurs every day in this department does not go unnoticed or unappreciated. I observed members of this department not respond to divisive statements or comments and continue to act in a professional manner. I also saw a police department that continued to provide exceptional service to the community we so proudly serve. And we also continue to challenge ourselves to do better and to be better. This incident has forever impacted the department and will continue to do so, but we will continue to embrace what the future brings with professionalism and leadership. I cannot change what happened on March 12th, but what I can do and have been doing since that day is to ensure that we continue to work to reduce the risk for the community and officers that can happen in incidents like this, that they can be considered complex, emotional, dangerous, and rapidly evolving. During the past 16 months, there have been newspaper articles, social media posts, billboards, and other divisive conversation from many. But there have also been moments of understanding and learning, and it is my hope that we as a community can continue to come together for the hopes of the future. In the next few weeks, there are decisions that will need to be made. Following these decisions, my hope is for the healing process to begin. This may take months, years, decades, or it may never occur, but this does not mean that we do not try as a community. Now is the time when we will need to come together as a community to not forget about what happened, to not minimize emotions or voices, and not be dismissive about how someone feels. And we need to find a way to work with each other to secure a path for the future. This will require hard conversations, and these conversations have to end with meaningful action. These conversations will be heart-wrenching and difficult, but I must stress that they have to end with impactful, tangible action. Action, not harmful divisive words, is what will make a difference for the future. And I want to say all of this before I get into the technical, the legal, and the policy discussions that will happen in the next few weeks. I need to say this so that our community can start on a path to move forward together with the police department, that members of the Elgin Police Department have not wavered in their dedication to the community, and I know that these words will not comfort some, will not satisfy some, or will never, or will never, ever be good enough for some. But I need to say this so that we as a community work and move forward together towards healing. I am committed and always have been to meet, to talk, to listen, to accept criticism, and keep pushing the police department forward. Throughout the last 16 months, I have thoughtfully considered Cynthia Clements' family and friends, Lieutenant Jensen's family and friends, the community, and the members of the department, all of their concerns, their feelings, their emotions, and their needs. And going forward with my decisions, I will do the same. In the end, my decisions will be made on facts, and although I know that this may never be good enough for some, for the community to move forward, these facts will have to be acknowledged. In February of this year, the Cook County State's Attorney's Office reviewed the Illinois State Police Public Integrity Task Force's investigation and determined that criminal charges against Lieutenant Jensen were not appropriate and that the use of force was legally justified. This decision was affirmed by the Illinois State Appellate Prosecutor's Office, who reviewed the investigation and likewise concluded that charges were not appropriate. This second review is in place so that it removes the politicizing of an incident and provides assurance to a community that the declining of criminal charges was appropriate and reinforces the integrity of the process. This determination was made on the legal framework and guidance on what a police officer can lawfully do during a use-of-force encounter. And these use-of-force incidents should always be weighed carefully, based on the evidence presented, and without political consideration. The police department has been committed to ensuring that an independent professional standards investigation took place, and that the findings of this investigation were released in its entirety to the public. The independent investigation by Hillard Hines also confirms that the use of deadly force by Lieutenant Jensen was within policy and appropriate. These policies and practices are based on well-established law and best practice, and confirms that Lieutenant Jensen acted according to his training and acted consistent with rules and regulations. It is important to recognize that whenever a police officer uses deadly force, it is a serious responsibility that must be carried out legally and with a respect for the sanctity of every person's life. Deadly force can only be used when an officer reasonably believes that a person poses a threat of death or serious physical injury to the officer or others. Officers are tasked and sometimes forced to make split-second judgments in circumstances that are not optimal. They are tense, they are uncertain, and they are rapidly evolving. These circumstances have pushed the police department into creating new frameworks for incidents involving emotionally distressed persons. During the past year, while awaiting the Cook County State's Attorney's Office decision and the completion of the Hillard Hines Independent Professional Standards investigation, the police department has implemented many initiatives. This is important for the community to hear, because actions, not words, are what defines change. These initiatives were put in place well before the independent investigations were completed, because it's the culture at the police department to always improve and always be better. During the past year, the police department has created our Collaborative Crisis Services Unit. This unit has two police officers and three part-time crisis workers, who have the overall mission of promoting and facilitating community wellness through collaborative partnerships. This unit focuses on those in crisis or those who need assistance and conducts follow-up that may require long-term involvement and strategies. We've also continued to certify every officer in the police department as a crisis intervention officer. When the incident occurred in March of 2018, we had 110 officers and community service officers who were trained, and as of today, we have 176. We have approximately 20 more people to train, and we will have this completed by the end of the year. Crisis intervention officers are the immediate interruption for a mental health crisis, and the creation of our Collaborative Crisis Services Unit will allow for more long-term prevention and intervention. And by 2020, we will be one of the few departments in the nation with its entire police force fully trained in crisis intervention. We also have taken what we have learned from our trips to New York and Scotland and London, and we have implemented an emergency services detail that brings specialized tools and tactics for the successful resolution of calls involving emotionally distressed persons who are violent or armed. We've also formalized our policy review committee, and we are currently in the process of reviewing all our departmental policies. This review will occur every year and will hit on every policy. We've also formalized our response to resistance committee that reviews the department's use of force monthly to better identify trends and needed training. We've also began the process of implementing an early warning software system that will enable a comprehensive analysis of officer performance that captures critical information such as training, use of force, internal affairs files, performance evaluations, and community engagement. We've also provided training on use of force to our community members and to members of the council, and we've also provided training to our community members on how to take a complaint against an officer. And lastly, we have initiated the process of working with the Center for Policing Equity, who will be conducting research and analysis on the police department's data, to include pedestrian and vehicle stops, our use of force, and our complaints. They will also be conducting an analysis of our policies and our procedures. A decision on Lieutenant Jensen's status will be made within the next few weeks and will be communicated to the public. The police department will be hosting several events to start on the path of healing. First, on July 30th, there will be a question-and-answer session that will take place from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the center. This is where the community can ask the police department's questions specific to the investigation. Second, on August 24th, from 4:00 to 6:00, there will also be a listening session for the community to participate in and will be held at Elgin Community College. The goal of the listening session will be to focus on healing and the mechanisms by which the community can move forward together. The listening session will take place with a moderator, who will also be meeting with key community groups prior to the listening sessions to elicit input and suggestions. We understand that we police by consent, and that we serve the public, and there are times when incidents occur, such as this one, that no one wants to happen. I recognize that some members of our community will not be satisfied by the final decisions that I will make, but these decisions are made in shape by facts, carefully considering the many thoughts, the emotions, the feelings, and the opinions of many people. Moving forward, we should all be mindful to acknowledge that the way things may have been done in the past may not be what the future needs. The learning culture of the police department is one that I will continue to build with my command staff. The community is part of this learning culture, and the department will continue to be open, empathetic, compassionate, and professional, so that the community can be both for accountability in the department and supportive of officers. This does not have to be a relationship that is incompatible. In closing, during the next few weeks, there will be many emotions and conversations. I ask that we continue our respect for each other and our community, and that we work with each other and not against each other to secure a hopeful future for all.
Thank you, Chief. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rashmer?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned.